Hearing none, we'll deem the agenda approved. Announcements from members of council. Councilors for Gere.
Yes, just wanted to just highlight Canada Day is this Sunday and to ensure that we're ready for the citizens of Bridgewater and surrounding area. We've got a Viking family fun, so bring the family and have lunch on King Street with the food vendor, various food vendors. Watch the parade of sale at Fijanouska Park, followed by the opening ceremonies at 2:00. We have lots of great musical entertainment, starting at 3:00. Many activities for all ages throughout King Street, such as log rolling, axe throwing, inflatables, face painting, penna tattoos, airbrush tattoos. We have lots of demos and fitness groups as well, so come out and join us. And finishes off the night with the fireworks at 10:15, so hope to see you there.
Excellent, thank you. It was probably the best Canada Day we've ever had last year, and there's quite a buzz about it coming back this year, so I'm really excited for it. Councilor Thorburn.
Yes, I'd just like to mention that the Despedes Museum again this year is holding their historic walking tours, and you can experience the historical 19th and 20th century architecture of Bridgewater houses through a guided walking tour. And it's going to start, the walking tours start at the Town Hall entrance, Pleasant Street, July the 5th, 12th, and 19th. Tickets are $5, children under 12 are free. And its tours start at 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Councilor Graves.
And I've got three, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So the United Way of Lunenburg County in partnership with the Town of Bridgewater and the municipality of Lunenburg's recreation departments is offering a free bus to Rizers Beach, whose purpose is to help provide new opportunities for kids, youth, and families who struggle with accessing transportation. This year, the date is July 14th, 9:00 to 4:00, with pickups in New Germany, exit 12, shipyards landing at Penn School. There are still some seats available, and if you're interested, please call the municipality of Lunenburg's Park and Rec Department at (902) Y30-3285. And the second announcement is this year's bikes for kids, we gave away a record 106 bikes. Usually we give away 60, 65, this year 106 refurbished bikes to kids and their parents who might be not in the financial position to purchase one themselves. We still have bikes available, about 40, and if you're interested, you can contact the Town of Bridgewater's recreation office and they'll see if you think you qualify. And if your family finances are suffering trying to purchase soccer equipment for your kids, the United Way of Lunenburg County has set up a used soccer equipment exchange at the HB Studio Sports Center in Bridgewater. Simply take what you need and leave what you don't.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of council have anything? I'll just add that this Wednesday, myself and some members of council are going for a walk, an organized walk, starting at 5:30 down at Fijanouska Park. So it's open to the public, anyone is more than welcome to join us if that sounds exciting. And I hope to see you there.
I'd just say congratulations to all this year's graduates.
Oh, yeah. Yes. The awards night at Parkview was exciting. 138 awards or bursaries or scholarships were given out that night, and we have some exceptional students in this community, and we should all be very proud. Tonight is prom, and Wednesday is graduation, Parkview. So, yes, thank you for bringing that up. Anything else from members of council? I'll just note that Deputy Mayor Tanner is away, so we'll be seeing him today. I don't know where I was going with that, he's away. Are there any members of the public delegations? No? One day that'll happen. The minutes before are before you, May 28th and June 11th, regular town council meetings. Any errors or omissions? Oh, just May 28th, sorry. Any errors or omissions other than that one I just made? No? Hearing none, we'll deem this as approved. And we'll go right down to planning items. FCM municipalities for climate innovation, I need my glasses, innovation program funding decrease, and our Director of Planning is going to run us through that one.
Yes, so back in January, when staff brought forward the Community Energy Investment Plan, we also brought forward a funding opportunity to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, MCHIP program. At that point in time, the maximum amount of funding that we could request over two years was $175,000. Council made a motion with those numbers in mind. After our application was submitted, we received notice from FCM that they had so many applications for that funding pot that they decided to reduce the maximum allowable funding by $50,000. So this is just a request, an update around that, and a request for council to just acknowledge that additional $50,000 that's now our, we would not be getting funding for. And so it just sort of raises the commitment, but we reviewed the financials, the funding that we have received in place, the budget that we had identified, and we're, staff are confident that we can work within that despite the decrease in funding that we received.
Okay. Questions from members of council on that?
Good morning.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve, in addition to the January 8, 2018 commitment laid in Resolution 18-010, an additional $50,000 towards the FCM Municipalities for Climate Innovation Program, MCHIP project. Therefore, raise the town's commitment to 137,000.
Second or please. Councilor Fager, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is Community Energy Investment Plan Implementation and Capacity Plan.
Yes, thank you. So from the report in front of you, we have two opportunities that we want to pursue. So one is, again, some funding to bring on an energy finance and development coordinator position. It's a two-year term position with 80% funding, again, through Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And again, with the receipt of the 250,000 Smart Cities funding and the money, the other monies that we have in place, staff are confident that there'll be no additional budget pressure bringing this on. And that this position will really help create the financial engine that we need to move the Community Energy Investment Plan forward without putting core services at risk. So this position really is looking at what are the different ways we can finance the energy shift and bring in a skill set that we just don't have within the existing staff here at Town Hall. And the second opportunity is with Efficiency Nova Scotia and Efficiency One, and to have an onsite embedded energy manager that would have sort of that engineering technical background and knowledge around renewable energy projects that, again, we don't have. That position would be staffed, would be a staff of Efficiency Nova Scotia, would be a 50-50 cost share, and would work with town staff on the various energy projects and implementing and renewing our existing Town Operations Energy Management Plan, and also providing that technical expertise that we need for our Smart Cities application and moving forward with our Smart Cities bid for the $5 million. And again, it's a 50-50 cost share. It would be a one-year term with the potential to turn it into a two-year term, funding dependent, of course, from the town, and would really help try to save the town money and reduce our dependence on other types of consultants to bring in the expertise that we need. And we've been working with Larry to identify sort of how that would work between the two departments.
Questions from members of council on that? Councilor Graves.
Just kudos for finding the resources and the grants to pay for staff, and that's really good.
Thanks.
Councilor Thorburn.
So we're going to authorize it for 24 months, but we can exit after 12?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the position we're in now, especially with Smart Cities being a Smart Cities finalist, I mean, we've been walking the walk for the better part of a decade, and we got to continue, right? We can't, we're at the point now where, okay, we're a Smart Cities finalist, and we can't just sit there back and go, oh, we're kind of thinking we weren't going to make it. We knew we were going to make it, right? We have the best plan, and so part of that is, you know, we had to ramp it up for the $5 million, and that means a staffing component. So I'm with Councilor Graves, I say, you know, kudos to you for finding grants and finding partners, and whenever you can find some staff with partners, especially if it's, you know, an 80% funder or even a 50% funder, I think that's great. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn or Councilor Fager? There's three of them there, you can.
Before she makes a motion, we have the best program, but we also have the best staff, and it's important that they go hand in hand.
Yes, absolutely. We have a great team. Councilor Fager.
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the establishment of a two-year term energy finance and development coordinator position to support the implementation of the Community Energy Investment Plan funded out of the existing budget, and direct the Director of Planning and Recreation to proceed immediately with the hiring process.
Have a second or please. Councilor McDonald, any further questions?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Councilor Thorburn, do you want to read the next one?
All right. I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to finalize and submit a funding application to FCM for climate change staff grant through the Municipalities for Climate Change Innovation Program, MCHIP, to seek funding towards your energy finance and development coordinator position, and to confirm to FCM that the town will contribute up to $16,000 or 20% of the position's salary per year toward the two-year term position.
Thank you. Have a second or please. Councilor McDonald again. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And the final motion in that package, Councilor McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Efficiency One to provide the cost-shared services of a qualified onsite energy manager for the purpose of identifying, coordinating, and facilitating the implementation of energy efficiency projects with the town for a period of 24 months, with the option, excuse me, to exit after 12 months, funded out of existing energy management program and Community Energy Investment Plan implementation budgets.
Have a second or please. Councilor Graves, any discussion on that?
Just a question, I noticed that this person will be managed by Efficiency One? Is that what the notes?
It's an employee of Efficiency One, correct?
So they're paying this person, paying benefits and all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Next item, we have no correspondence for information, excuse me. Next item is Municipality District Lunenburg Bill Number 59, which is an Act Respecting Accessibility in Nova Scotia and the Accessibility Plan for Lunenburg County. And there's a recommendation here. Did you want to speak to that?
Sure. Mr. McDonald? Through the mayor to council, as councils are aware, last year, the government of Nova Scotia brought forth accessibility legislation, which is expected that it will be rolled out to municipalities in the near future. Many municipalities, including the Town of Bridgewater, have been working on accessibility initiatives and efforts for quite some time. This will give us a framework going forward to ensure that we're all on the same path. It's recommended that we work together with our other colleague municipalities so that we develop harmonized policy and do such efficiently in terms of engagement with the community on accessibility and all of this type of work. So we believe that it'd be very effective to get direction to work together on a joint committee towards accessibility, and we'll bring that back to the respective councils for approval.
Fantastic. Any questions from members of council?
Glad to see everybody working together, I think that's.
Yeah, makes perfect sense, and glad you're recommending that, Councilor McGinnis.
I'm a bit backward, didn't we already have an Accessibility Act in Nova Scotia?
So the Act doesn't cover municipalities yet, that will come in here very soon, so the Accessibility Act was approved there last year.
You willing for a motion, your motion?
Yes, please, I do have one more question, maybe you don't know the answer to it, though. How does the Accessibility Act impact places like the exhibition or other entities like that that are, I mean, they exist through an act of legislation, and I know when we worked on the town's smoking bylaw, for example, they were automatically exempt for that. And I'm just thinking, you know, they're fundraising now for a building, it's, if they're going to have to make improvements and other things, it's going to be a struggle for groups like that to fundraise. Are they exempt still, or?
I can look into that specifically, but overall, the legislation is to move the entire province towards a more accessible Nova Scotia for everybody. So, you know, what we're finding is that, you know, the things that are enacted are not, they're long-term in nature, looking for a plan. So I'm not sure what specific things would impact the exhibition.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes, Councilor Graves?
Yes, Your Worship, I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to work with other Lunenburg County municipal units to develop a, to develop a recommended terms of reference for a joint accessibility committee for Lunenburg County.
Thank you. Second or, Councilor Graves? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Reports and recommendations, we have our building inspection report from May 2018. Another healthy month in the Town of Bridgewater, and I think we're just going to comment every month how much we like the improved layout of the report and the breakdown of what's being done. I think it's a lot of good information, whether you're a resident or a potential developer in the Town of Bridgewater. Any questions?
No, it's just so easy to read and so much information there and easy to find.
Yeah, so much appreciated.
Yeah.
Councilor Graves?
Just to call on sewage lift station 10, when we had the presentation last week, that wasn't one of the gravity ones, was it? Remember they were talking about replacing a lift station and?
We're going to talk about sewage lift station.
We're not on that right now.
We're not on that.
Further down, no, we're up at building inspection reports. But that's okay. Save your question.
Yeah, I will.
As always, if you have questions, contact Mr. Feener. Next item is the RFP, RFP for the grid-tied solar photovoltaic system at the outdoor pool. And Mr. Feener, do you want to explain that a little bit for the public's benefit?
Sure, I can. We received five submissions for the, excuse me, requests for proposal for the grid-tied solar photovoltaic system on May the 10th. The approved budget is $30,000. The request for proposal required the design, supply, installation of a new system, as well as a recommended most appropriate location. It was determined that the pool was most suited for a number of reasons, but primarily due to the complexities that were raised during when we put the solar, the hot water solar on the Town Hall with the Town Hall facility. There's a few other advantages with the pool as far as accessibility to the roof if some roof changes need to be done. We also upgraded that roof in 2016, so it's relatively new. We do need to improve the panel, upgrade the panel in order to take advantage of getting the most out of the system, so that's an expense of between $1,500 to $2,000. So we are applying for, applying to Nova Scotia Power in effort to sell the power back at a set rate, we're not sure if we're successful, we're just in the process of making application, but if we're not successful, then this will revert back to what they call a net metering system. And the system will generate power electricity all year, it's not a seasonal thing, so it is an all-year thing. So we are recommending that the proposal be awarded to Natural Forces Construction Limited for the 10.8 kilowatt system for $29,941.34, including HST.
Questions from members of council before we put a motion on the floor? Councilor Graves?
So just in regards to the pool, there's two years left on the community contract. What happens if in year three, if there's, if nobody steps up in the community to support the Bridgewater or the rating super outdoor pool? So what would happen, in the worst-case scenario, what would happen to the solar panels then?
The system can be transferred if that were to happen, I guess the only expense in the upgrade would be the upgraded panel. Based on the return that's expected from the system, it'd be about a one-year turn on the upgrade of the panel only.
But, well, first of all, that would be a worst-case scenario if we decide to close the pool, but even if council decides to close the pool, it doesn't mean that building would necessarily come down, right? So as long as the building is up and the panels are on it, it would continue working as well. But, you know, good question, but for the public's benefit, we have not had a discussion on closing the outdoor pool at all. Councilor Thorburn.
Larry, did I read somewhere that it's looking at a 20-year contract with the power? If we get that?
Yes, correct. They're looking for a 20-year agreement.
Yeah, okay, good.
Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award RFP 2018-01 to Natural Forces Construction Limited for the design, supply, and installation of a 10.8 kilowatt solar PV system for the outdoor pool. Es� proposed and revised RFP submitted date June 2018 at a total installed price of $33,017.42, including HST, $29,941.34, net HST.
Have a second or please. Councilor Fager, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is appointment to the Bridgewater Act of Transportation Advisory Committee. Councilor Thorburn?
We missed 9.0 that Michael was talking about.
We missed what?
Oh, the lift station? That's next.
That's next.
Yeah, but it was 9.
It's 9.0, it was before.
The motion number.
9.0, I'm sorry. The motion's reading one thing and the other thing.
So we're okay, we're good?
Oh, absolutely. I'm looking at the motions.
Oh, I see what happened, yeah, it's linked funny on there.
Oh, okay.
It will be somewhere else.
All right, the numbers just didn't line up.
Okay.
Fine.
So we're good?
Yep.
Councilor Fager.
Do you like me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
For the Appointment to Bridgewater Act of Transportation Committee. That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and appoint Michael Stewart as a resident representative for a three-year term to the Bridgewater Act of Transportation Committee effective immediately.
Thank you. Second or, Councilor Thorburn, pretty straightforward, and someone that we all know is very active in his transportation, he's walking everywhere. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, RFP 2018-02, Engineering Services for Replacement of Sewage Lift Station 10. Mr. Feener, do you want to just run us through that one for the benefit of the public, please?
Sure. We received four proposals for the engineering services to replace the sewage pump station 10, which is located in the Parkdale subdivision. Staff evaluated the proposals based on the seven criteria that was outlined in the RFP document, and determined that CBCL Limited scored the highest. The approved capital budget for this project is $300,000, which includes both the engineering as well as the construction. We are recommending that this be awarded to CBCL Limited at a cost of $53,632.50, including HST, and also authorize staff to include the provisional expenditures if it's determined that they're required during the preliminary engineering stages.
Okay. Councilor Graves, do you want to ask your question again, please?
Sure. So this, when we had the sewage study last week, this was not one of the stations that could be gravity, gravity?
It's not one that would be considered in the foreseeable future. It may be, that particular priority would be down the road. We have other priorities we'd want to address before this.
Okay. Other questions? For someone, make a motion? No, someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Thank you.
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award RFP 2018-02, Engineering Services for Replacement of Sewage Lift Station 10 to CBCL Limited at a cost of $53,632.55, including HST, which is $48,635.86 net HST, and approval for engineering staff to authorize the provisional expenditures if they are identified as being necessary in the preliminary design.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Councilor McDonald, any further discussion? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Business arising and unfinished business, Pro Kids programs and outdoor pool passes. So we did have an item that was raised.
So I'm going to declare a conflict on that.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Graves. So we did have an item that was raised in terms of how to get more kids into the outdoor pool, and how we fund that. And so the recommendation was to take the Pro Kids money that would be used for outdoor pool funding, realign it for other programs, and the town would have to offset that cost by finding, in this case, $2,000 from somewhere else. So, questions? Councilor Thorburn?
It looks like what we're doing is just transferring money within the Parks and Recreation budgets, is coming from somewheres to go to the Pro Kids. It's just bouncing what we already have, there's no increase in the budget.
No, there's no increase, but for wherever we do increase, we have to decrease, right? So, yeah, so Recreation will have to find a program to decrease by $2,000 if I read this correctly in order to increase that.
Correct, yeah.
So the question would be, is that dope?
Yes.
Wonderful. Would I like to have a motion?
Well, I would, but my question is, if you're decreasing a program, do we know what we're decreasing?
Not entirely at this point in time, no. There are, there are.
There's room somewhere without totally?
There is some room, there is high demand for the Pro Kids program. So, and it seems higher demand this year than there has been in previous years. We, there are several options that we can look at, and there's fall programming and winter and programming as well that could go with slight decreases. We could look at where the facilities are that we're using, we could look at a variety of different things to, in short order, figure out exactly where that would come from. We were unable to do that, so, but there, we would be able to find some places.
As long as we're not cutting off our nose, spider face, so.
Hopefully not.
But, all right, I, yes?
It's safe to assume that it's not going to result in an increase in the price of programming, which would kind of balance out in the long run. That is not the intention. Okay.
Good question. Any other questions? No, would you like to make a motion? Yes, please.
I'll put a motion on the floor, yes. The Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve an increase in funding for the Pro Kids program youth subsidy account, offset by decrease in funding for recreation program for a total value of $2,000 for the 2018-19 fiscal year.
Thank you. Have a second or please. Councilor Thorburn, any further discussion? No, hearing none, all questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Long down. Next item is Policy 89, Fees, Hebbville Sewer Rates. And we've had this discussion in the past. Our sewer rates in Hebbville were, correct me if I'm wrong, less than they were in the Town of Bridgewater. And so, of course, it should never be where the taxpayer of the Town of Bridgewater is financing services for people outside the Town of Bridgewater. There needs to be some balance put into the system, and that is where we're going with this. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it if we wish?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the revised Policy 89 fees to include annual sewer charges for Hebbville modal properties as presented in Document 18-060B with an effective date of April 1st, 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Councilor Graves, discussion?
I just have a question. So the reason that the April 1st date is in there, is that to coincide with the billing?
And I believe they were given notice that this was coming long before April 1st. So this won't be a surprise.
All right, thank you.
But, good question. Councilor Thorburn?
If I read that one correct, it seemed like we was charging the industrial users the same as the residential users in the past. Is that the way I read that document?
That's probably.
We charged the same rate.
Question from Mrs. Kaiser, but it does appear that way.
That's the way it kind of reads here for anyone.
Councilor McDonald?
Do we have an anticipated date for the completion of that study?
Yes. So we expect that through the fall of September, we'll be talking about wastewater design of councils. of council, so we're just a couple months away from those discussions.
Great, thank you.
So Council Thorburn, back to your question. Do you, do you want us to get staff to give, to just confirm that answer with you?
It's here in the writing, the document that I read. I just wanted confirmation. I thought staff, but they're not here, so that's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
No? Again, we've discussed this before, so this won't be new for those users. We have a motion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And our final item is South Shore Regional Enterprise Network Withdrawal. And this is not, this is not a new item. I don't know if the CAO wants to tee this up for the benefit of the public, please?
Sure. So this is generally procedural, as council's aware of. We've been talking about sometime where the Town of Bridgewater gave its, gave its notice to withdraw from the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network some time ago, in January, and, sorry, March. And if we all move together, which we may, as municipalities, we can wind up quicker than that. So we require direction from council so that the Board of Directors can work towards that and execute an agreement with our other municipal partners to, to do that.
Thank you. And just for the benefit of the public, so the REN that we had was the largest, had the largest geographic area with the smallest budget, and was the only REN that had tourism added as part of its mandate. So it, it was not the same as all the others, so some of their resources couldn't, they couldn't share it, and it was just too large, far too large, and was not as effective as we had hoped, and through no fault of their own, it's just, it was almost, I hate to say it, but doomed from the start, just the way it was set up. And so, there's, there was, there's no sense in prolonging it. If it's not going to work, then we have to try something else. And so all the partners have essentially agreed to, to try something else. So someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn?
Resolution 18-070 approved at the March 26, 2018 Town Council meeting, in which reads as follows, be rescinded. That pursuant to Section 14 of the intermunicipal agreement established in the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network dated January the 12th, 2017, Bridgewater Town Council hereby gives one year's notice of its intention to withdraw as a partner in the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network, and authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Chair of the Board of Directors and the Chair of the Liaison and Oversight Committee advising the same.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Council McDonald, any discussion on that? So we're rescinding this motion, then we'll make a new motion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And would you care to also make that motion? Thank you.
That pursuant to Clause 14B, Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater authorize the mayor and CAO to execute an agreement to terminate the intermunicipal agreement for a framework for the continued operation of the regional enterprise network, with said termination be effective not later than September the 30th, 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Council McDonald, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We are at the end of our agenda, and it's almost the record. Well, no? All right. Sandra, Sandra keeps, she knows the record. We've, we've flipped to summer hours now, so our council meetings will be, our schedule's basically cut in half. Want to encourage the public to go out on Canada Day to King Street and just...
Have fun.
Have fun, take part in all the activities there, and of course, thanks once again to all our sponsors for the event, and of course, the Bridgewater Volunteer Fire Department for teeing up our fireworks, as always. So, thank you. Have a great summer. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Council Thorburn? Council McDonald? We are adjourned.
That's my purpose here now.